So, welcome everyone to ANC three, four G's, May thirteenth, regular meeting, virtual only. I'm Peter Goslin. I'm Vice Chair and Commissioner for District Six, which is largely the west side of Connecticut. And we'll start with the introductions of the other Commissioners, Commissioner Sherman.
Good evening, everybody. Bruce Sherman, I represent single-member District Zero Two, which is bordered on the south by Military at St. John's College High School, up on the north at Tennyson, although we go up a little bit more than that to Unicorn Lane in Oregon Knolls and over to Utah, then back down to Military.
Zach?
Hi, everyone. I'm Zach Ferguson. I represent single-member District Oh Seven, and I'm also the ANC's Treasurer.
Peter?
Hi, everyone. I'm Peter Lynch. I represent SMD Oh Five. Welcome to the meeting.
Jim?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jim Nash. I'm single-member District Zero Three, which is the southeasternmost segment of our ANC.
And Michael, if you're on, I think you're on audio.
Yeah, I'm on, I'm on audio. For some reason, my video is stopped, but it's Michael Zeldin, and I'm three G Oh Four, which is Lafayette Elementary and the environments around it.
Zach, if you know how to get us all up front in the pictures role, that would be great. I don't. Okay, so with that, we'll get started. The rules that we play by are that people are, try to be respectful and control their tempers, even when issues are very important to them. The rules, as they were posted with this agenda, allow people, including Commissioners, to speak for three minutes and follow up for two. I'm going to raise the issue when we get to the issue of just talking about meetings in the future, about reducing those numbers, and I strongly, strongly urge you to keep your comments to two minutes and any follow-up to one minute. And Jim Nash is going to be timekeeper, and I'm asking Jim to let people know when the two-minute mark is up, as well as the three. So you have the right to speak for three minutes, but we're losing people, including Commissioners. Zach Ferguson is a classic example of somebody who has young kids and simply, you can't even attend the meeting if you actually have a full-time job. It makes it very difficult, so that we need to tighten up our meeting. So with that said, let's move right through the early part of the agenda. First, the agenda itself, we need to approve. I wrote all of you this morning saying I needed to add a letter and commentary on the letter by members of our Race Committee, Rachel and Social Equity Standing Committee. I subsequently got an email from Libby Martin, who's the co-chair, suggested that they simply come in, come in at the top of our resident forum period. And so if that is okay with you, I, I think that's a good way to handle the race issue. The other issue I want to handle on the agenda is there are several people on the listserv argue that we should take up local issues first. There are two broader issues. Commissioner Lynch's proposal, resolution on DC statehood, and testimony by the new Deputy Mayor for Planning and Economic Development, Nina Alpert, who I, do I see her here? In any case, I mean, I'll be guided by what other Commissioners want to do. Recognize that Peter Lynch invited people to speak on the issue of DC statehood under the rules that existed when I published this, this agenda. So I don't think, even if we push that back some, we should push it back to the end of the meeting. So what are, what are people's views on when we, whether we want to move local issues, issues like the, the, the St. John's College High School BZA application or some of these other issues up front? That's a question. What do you want to guys, what do you guys want to do? Peter?
Yeah, I, I really, I understand the idea of wanting the local issues first. Just because we've got guests here, I would maybe propose that we do the local issues with guests, then the statehood resolution, because we have guests, and then move on to the other local issues.
Others?
Yeah, I would just argue for local issues first, if that's convenient for everybody. There may be several local issues that we could get to and move through relatively quickly.
Well, so let's, can we approve the agenda with handling the Race Committee as part of community comments and take up some of these local issues, some of these big local issues first, and then take up statehood? And Peter, you should note that I do not see Deputy Mayor Alpert on the call right now. So statehood would be right after we get some of these local issues out of the way.
So I think, hey, Peter, sorry, I think Derek Johnson may have a comment.
Yes, sorry to interrupt. Deputy Mayor Alpert will plan to join about five to 10 minutes before seven twenty-five.
So Commissioner, Commissioner Goslin, if we're prepared to move, once we approve the agenda to local issues, I might suggest that we address the St. John's BZA issue first. I see Kevin Haley here already. We're probably ready to go, and I don't think it'll take too awfully long.
I, I would like, I agree with Commissioner Sherman's suggestion. I, this is something that affects my SMD. I've been around to talk to people, and I don't see this as being controversial.
So, so we're proposing to take local issues up first and, and even before the community comments. Libby and Corinthia, we will get to you right after this St. John's issue. The, if that's the amendment to our agenda, can we approve the agenda? All in favor? So is there anything on the consent agenda approval? Do we have, do we have minutes that we, I don't think?
We do have minutes. Yes, I sent around the minutes to the April twenty-fifth special meeting. There may actually be a set of minutes prior to that, but certainly those meeting minutes are done, and I sent those around to everybody if you want to approve those.
Sorry, we banned them. Why don't we push that to the end? I mean, I didn't even look at them. I didn't see them. I don't, when, when did you send those? Somebody is, could you all mute yourselves? When did you send those, Bruce?
This morning. There's no rush. If we want to postpone it to the next meeting, I don't know that there's.
So with that, let's take up the, let's take up the St. John's College High School BZA issue. And either Jim, this is, I guess, is going to be jointly presented by Jim and Bruce, since it's in your adjoining districts.
Right. If I might, Jim, with Commissioner Nash, with your leave, introduce Kevin Haley. St. John's is a constituent in my district. Of course, the property they're looking at, acquiring and needing BZA approval for expansion is in your district. So of course, we'll do this together, but I do want to welcome Kevin Haley to our meeting and also introduce him to the community who might not yet know that he is the new president of St. John's College High School, taking over from Jeff Moncabelli, who served with distinction for a number of years. Kevin has a very distinguished career in, in corporate life, most recently with, with Under Armour, but he's very well-known, a native Washingtonian. Several of his children graduated from St. John's. He's very familiar with the school and the community. He himself is a Princeton grad and UVA grad in law school. So we welcome Kevin to our neighborhood, and particularly, again, Kevin, we've had an opportunity to meet a couple of times and talk in person. The, the members of the Commission have your background packet. We're happy to have you walk us through the slide deck if you would like. Commissioners may have some quick questions, but if we'd like to go ahead and do that very quickly and have you maybe introduce your attorney and your architect and give a brief overview of the project so that the community members that are tuned in here will understand what, what's in play.
Okay, and just before Kevin does that, and Kevin, welcome and welcome to the St. John's team. Commissioner Nash, you have any comments?
Right, I have not, and I do have a couple of things I want to say, but I would prefer to say them after the school has presented its plans.
So Kevin, your leave, take it away.
Great, thank you. I will quickly introduce Christine and Matt, but I just want to say thank you for the time to introduce myself. I will also be a neighbor, joining you as a resident of the old Buchanan House on Utah Street. So good to be a part of the community. And just at the top, I'd love to say that really what we're proposing here is a use that would be for residents, who would be teachers, which would be a fifty percent reduction in the number of residents in the facility compared to the past and a fifty percent reduction in the number of staff. We'd have offices there. We would not be using it for students or classrooms, and we'd be eliminating the overnight staff and reducing traffic in terms of car traffic to the school by fifteen cars every day. So with that, I'll turn it over to Christine, our zoning expert, and Matt Bell will also be available for any questions as our architect.
So Kevin, besides Christine and Matt, are there any other people I'm supposed to promote on? Okay, that's it. Okay, good.
No.
Christine, large jury.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners and members of the community. My name's Christine Shiker. I'm a partner at the Law Firm of Holland tonight, and I'm pleased to be here this evening. I'm going to share my screen, if that's okay.
Thank you. Can, can you make that happen?
A co-host can't do that, but the host, you can, you've got that. If you make me a host, I can do it, but not co-host.
So. I just was going to share the presentation that we had circulated to the Commissioners.
It's my tech facility that is at work here, so just.
Maybe while, while we're doing that, while we're sharing the screen, I'll just point out for everybody that the, the history here has been, we've had one meeting with Jim Nash and Bruce Sherman. We had a, a meeting where we invited immediate neighbors to campus, and we had Jim Nash, Bruce Sherman, and some of the immediate neighbors who stopped by, and then this will be our, our third meeting with the community to share at a high level our plans.
I've just made you host.
Okay, see if it works for you now, Christine.
Yes, it does. Thank you. You can see my screen?
Yep.
All right, great. Thank you. So again, just this slide will orient everyone as to the location of the acquisition. The property is located at twenty-seven oh one Military Avenue, Military Road, excuse me, across the street from the existing school campus. It is located also within the R one A zone. It's improved with the two-story building that was the Forest Side Assisted Living Facility. It was built around nineteen fifty-one. Here are some pictures of the existing conditions, and we do not plan to make any changes to the exterior of the building. This is an indication of the general layout of the site, including the location of the existing parking and loading. And again, there's no changes proposed to that. These two slides give you a general idea of how we would divide the building, with the lower level being used for administrative or building services, and then the upper two levels, the first and second floor, being split between faculty housing for up to fifteen to twenty faculty members and then administrative offices. As Kevin mentioned, there is no intention for students to cross Twenty-seventh Street. This will be simply to house functions that are currently on the campus into the acquired building. It does result in a reduction of the number of residents by approximately fifty percent, elimination of overnight staff, and a, a, a net decrease essentially in the number of people coming, because these would be staff members who are already, already on the campus as we don't propose any changes to the, the students or the number of faculty and staff. This is just giving you an indication of how we have satisfied the standards. These are the technical requirements of service and filings, and then again, the standard of review for adding this property onto the private school plan. Basically, we're not increasing the number of students, faculty, or staff, which does result in a reduction in traffic, and it is an institutionally-used property today. We are maintaining the residential and institutional use, so no adverse impact from that use. And then finally, as Kevin summarized, we have been, been doing outreach to the immediate community and to the ANC Commissioners, and this is a summary of that information. And so with that, we've opened it up for questions.
Do you want to take down, or do you want to leave this thing out?
There we go.
Okay, let's start with Commissioners. Commissioners, Commissioner Nash said he has.
Yeah. So when, I, I want to ask one question, and then I have just a couple of things to say about, about this. Why do you need BZA approval for a project that does not alter the exterior at all?
So this site is R one A zoning, and any time that you are putting a private school use, the Board of Zoning Adjustment looks at it for impacts. It's fully compliant with the zoning requirements, but it is, any time St. John's does something to its campus, I, I think our most recent case was changing walkways, the Board of Zoning Adjustment looks at it. So it's just a standard procedure that, that is, most of the school, all the private schools that are in the R one zones would go.
Right. And I, I want to say that I, I spent an evening walking around the block and knocking on doors of everyone who lives there, and I spoke to about half the residents. And if they didn't know about it when I explained it, they had no problem with it. The only thing that did come up, which I don't think is really related to this project at all, because all the parking is going to be for, for the residents, the faculty, there's going to be parking for all of them on-site, right?
So there are eleven parking spaces on the current twenty-seven oh one. We continue to have well more parking spaces than required on the campus, so that will not change, and that's been the case, you know, for the last decade or so.
Because the, the only issue that came up as I talked to people was some mild annoyance among some people about students, it seems, who are parking in, in front of people's houses. Maybe they're not allowed to park on the school because they're not authorized to drive. I, I don't know. I don't think that's directly related here, but I'm just communicating that to the school that this is causing some people a little bit of concern. But in general, I am a big fan of affordable housing in our very expensive neighborhood, and I'm, I'm a former teacher, so I know how hard it is to afford housing when you're being paid as a teacher. So in principle, I, I'm, I'm a big fan of this project, and that's, that's all I have to say.
And Jim, just as an update, when we heard the comments around the parking, we mentioned in the meeting that we would acquire a new cellphone that would rotate through the security staff and give that number to the neighbors. And so we've acquired that phone, set up the account, given it to the security staff, and we need to distribute that number so that if people have an issue with the parking, they can call us directly and we can deal with it immediately. I think what's actually going, we provide parking. What's actually going on is kids don't want to park on the campus if they're late or they're not in compliance with dress code, and so they use the neighborhood as a way to sort of sneak in discreetly, and it's effectively a discipline problem. And so we're going to get the security staff phone in the hands of the neighbors.
Okay, good, Kevin. That's good news. Well, there's one other thing that you reminded me of that I, I read in your material, you're going to encourage people who live there not to transport themselves with motor vehicles, but instead, public transportation and bikes. And of course, you, I don't know if you realize this, but I'm, I'm a big fan of those other modes of transportation. And Jeff, I believe, committed, I suggested this, and Jeff committed to giving faculty members there a free trial, one-year subscription or membership to the bike share. Is that, is that the case?
We will absolutely do that. We are going to have bike racks indoor in the, in the new facility in that basement building administration zone that Christine showed. And then we're going to have the ability to have umbrellas for walkers at both ends. So at St. John's in there, so nobody feels like they have to drive just because it might rain, et cetera. So.
Good, okay. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Let me just weigh in here with regard to the housing. As you know, this community is under substantial pressure to produce more housing and more affordable housing. Does, do the units that you are going to create count as new units? Or because the building housed people prior to this, are they, is it sort of, if you will, a wash? Or a fifty percent decline in, in residences or something like that? How does the city, how will the city view these, these faculty housing units?
So that, that's a, that is a great question, and I don't believe that for a side that the assisted living facilities would have been considered and part of like the housing tracking app that the DEMPET has, showing you how many market rate units, how many IZ or affordable units are. So, so we're not removing any affordable units, but I'm certainly happy to, to check in, to see how they would add in. I mean, certainly, they should go into the overall evaluation, even if they're not part of the traditional inclusionary zoning program, because it is affordable housing for people who are working in the community. And so we can follow up with the Office of Planning about that.
Christine, why don't you stay online after this segment of the, of the meeting? And because Nina Alpert, the new DEMPET Director, will be on, so you can, you can lobby her there for counting these units. So other commissions. Matt, you have anything you want to say?
Uncharacteristically, no.
Okay.
So I would then move that we approve their application, barring any further questions.
And I'm happy to second.
We're voting, we're voting to support their application, right?
To support their application, exactly.
So and you, and Jim, you second?
Yes, I second.
Okay, let me take it, we're to a vote. All in favor? Okay, Michael, are you on?
He is.
Yep, there you are. Oh, good, with camera. Do you have your hand raised? Is that to vote, or do you want to sit? No.
You're muted, Michael.
I was just practicing.
Okay, so I think we've, we've done the deed here. I mean, this, this issue is, is, is done with. Thank you all for coming, and it sounds like a wonderful use of that facility. So.
Thank you, Kevin and team. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My suggestion is we now go back to community comment, and we start with, with raise. So I see Libby and Zach, your host, so why don't you promote her? And do I see Corinthia?
And Peter, before we go to that, just one little procedural thing. When we take a vote, let's articulate orally what the vote count was. So when we look at this and do the minutes, we know that was six zero.
Okay.
Right, because I looked at it, right? And when we approve the agenda, Michael was off-camera. Was it five zero or six zero? Michael, did you approve the agenda?
I did.
Okay, so it's six zero. Okay, very good.
I, I see Deputy Mayor Alpert on. So Deputy Mayor, we're honored you're here. We're going to take some community comment before we switch to you. So just bear with us for a few minutes here.
No problem.
Okay. Libby, are you up?
Yep, can you hear me? Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah, is, is, is Corinthia here?
I think she's on.
Corinthia, if you raise your hand, maybe I can, well, I mean.
She's there.
Oh, there she is. Yeah. So Zach, can you promote her too? Zach? Zach?
So anyone who shares your screen gets promoted. So if you're on video, you get promoted.
All right. Okay, so, so how about it?
Oh, it will be brief. Hello, Commissioners and neighbors. Can you hear me? Great. Because the, the Rachel and Social Equity Committee asked to be on tonight's agenda so that we could be on record about the subject of historic preservation, because much earlier than tonight, RACE had expected to share its position in an ANC meeting. And as everybody knows, the meeting agendas are often a moving target, lots of issues and influx and time-sensitive issues, deadlines. So here we are, and we know that the historic preservation designation for Chevy Chase is no longer on the table, but we still think it's important for RACE to have a statement that we've been wanting to share for some time. So everyone may recall that in early April, the Historic Preservation Review Board turned down the request by Chevy Chase Conservancy to make Chevy Chase a historic district. And Chevy Chase, RACE was very delighted with this decision, and so we just want to commend the Historic Preservation Office for prioritizing issues, prioritizing the issues of racial equity and, and any future analysis going forward. And we just fully support HBO's Historic Preservation Office's statement of April eighth and its emphasis on requirements for things going forward, such as data collection and mapping and equity analysis in all its forms, if there's to be any evaluation going forward. So we just would like that to be known and as our, as our position that RACE is definitely wanting to stand with. So thank you very much.
Corinthia, do you have anything you'd like?
Hi, Corinthia, no, nothing to add. Thank you, Libby.
Thanks, Corinthia.
So my, so I don't, this does not require any action on our part now.
No.
But we, but we, we will, we understand the position you're taking, and if, I, I do think that technically what the HBO and the HBRB did was they, they, they deferred, or they, they, and they're not taking up this year. So this issue may well arise again.
Right, which is definitely why we, so I recommend that they continue their, their focus on the data collection and mapping and equity analysis that they, they said they would focus on if they were to continue in the future.
So with that, I, I think what we ought to do is have Deputy Mayor Alpert speak and then come back for other comments, open mic comments by the community, just because she's now on. And so Zach, could you promote her? And it's Albert, our chair, Lisa Gore, regrets that she can't be here. She is, she may dip in, but who knows? I'm, we're interested, we understand that this is a budget presentation by you of the FY twenty-five budget. You'll have to understand that this community is particularly interested in a piece of that budget that has to do with the redevelopment of the community center and library and the fact that there was no additional money for, in the DPR budget, for the community center and only minimal amounts for the library. So that may be an issue that we have questions for you about. But take it away. What, you get to say what you want to say first.
Okay, well, I will, you know, kind of roll through the budget and then obviously make sure that there's time to answer any questions that you might have. I believe that somebody is kind of in control of the slides, and I'll just say, next slide, Derek, if we need to. So as you know, the mayor submitted her budget to council on April third, and agencies since then have been wrapping up their budget oversight hearings. Uh since then have been wrapping up their budget oversight hearings. Um and now it's with the council to finalize what they want uh, how they see the budget shaping up. So tonight, I'm just gonna walk through a very high level of what the core elements of the pro- proposed budget include. And also um just add a little bit of context as to. How we framed uh the budget and how we made the decisions that we did for this year. Um, okay, so. Uh I want to just start by saying generally that uh the district uh is still performing well overall. In terms of our economy and some other key indicators. So despite headwinds, um we are still showing signs of strength. Uh some of which are on this slide and some of the things I'll just point to because. This is my uh work and what I pay attention to, which is. Our gross domestic product, which continues to increase uh this, this year, our population is growing, which. Uh by the way, is um not the case for many uh major cities. And so. Uh this is a sign of strength. Um our city's bond raising, rating remains triple A. And resident employment has increased and unemployment has decreased. Uh we still need to improve, of course, but. Overall, these are the positive indicators. Next slide. Um so revenue growth over the past decade has been significant. And that is why we've been able to invest. Um healthily in uh so many different aspects uh that our community values. So since twenty eighteen, uh sorry, twenty ten. Revenues have grown approximately six percent per year, and this has allowed us to make the transformational investments that we have. Across the city in public transporta- in public transportation, public safety, housing, economic development, schools, et cetera. Um and so uh we do have some things that we want to point out, which is. That since twenty fifteen, we've been able to modernize forty-five schools and complete two hundred and eighteen school stabilizations. Uh we also got MPD back on the path to four thousand officers through hiring and retention incentives. And then uh the thing that is really in uh DEMPET's wheelhouse is the fact that we have created thirty-three thousand affordable housing units. Um, sorry, yeah, thirty-three thousand affordable housing units, and we've preserved. Twenty-six hundred uh affordable units. So. These are all uh tremendous investments and successes. Uh not to mention the fact that um we have rebuilt eighty-eight percent of our road sidewalks and alleys. Um and put them back into a state of good repair. Now. Uh the economic forecast and what we're looking at uh tells a little bit of a different story. Uh which is uh what is causing us to uh work together as a community and say, okay. How do we deal with the fact that revenue growth historically has been strong? But projected revenue growth. Um through twenty twenty-eight is only projected to be two percent. That's compared to the six percent that we've enjoyed. Now, we're having two percent. Uh revenue growth while costs, on the other hand, are growing by seven and a half percent per year. So. This year is the first of a couple of years that we're anticipating being challenging. Um this year in particular um has a few circumstances um that are um sort of uh. You know, uh forcing certain types of decisions. So first of all, I mentioned the significant cost increases, but particularly this year. Eight hundred and fifty million dollars um a year for Womata uh that's been projected by Womata, and this region is wrestling with that. The district's always been very supportive of public transportation, so we were one of. Uh the early uh commit- made early commitments to supporting those cost increases and covering them for Womata. Uh there's also labor agreements, recruitment costs, school support, Medicaid matching, utilities. Leasing and security and other types of costs that um we cannot negotiate. Those are costs that are baked in and that we must meet. Um we also have this year um expiring federal funds uh that were one-time. As a result of the American Rescue Plan Act. Those funds expire, that's three point three billion dollars. That the district received uh during COVID. Um and those are set to expire at the end of this calendar year, so December thirty-first. I also think that it's important to mention that in addition to what you'll see, to what you see on this slide at a microeconomic level. While we're showing uh signs of strength as an economy, one of our main revenue generators, which is commercial property tax. Has suffered um due to obviously telework. And um we are right now just starting to see, uh but we anticipate that we'll continue to see. Negative, or I should say downward pressure on the valuation of office property. And so that will mean. Fewer tax dollars coming in um as a result of uh the uh impact of the office market. Okay, so how do we take all of that? And uh turn that into some parameters and principles for decision making? Um so the city administrator and the mayor and the whole host of agency directors. Uh sort of abided by and lived by these principles. Number one, we are going to invest in maintaining and enhancing our core services. As well as investments that protect health and safety of residents. That's what. Um uh people expect of the government, um and we have to deliver um some baseline services that all residents anticipate. Number two. We have prioritized programs that demonstrate, that have a proven track record of demonstrating high impact. And advancement of equity. So I just listened in on the last, you know, two, three minutes of your conversation. And about the discussion about equity um as we have invested over the years in equitable advancement. Where we see those programs that have particularly high returns, those are the types of programs that we want to continue to invest in. And then lastly, third banner. Of how we've been prioritizing our dollars is really in catalyst, catalytic investments. That can help change that trajectory that I just talked to you about. Um uh for the city so that um investments in public safety, which is always foundational. Uh to any um healthy community. Education, uh it's an investment in our future. Um as a city, as a community. And then three, investment in downtown. And the focus uh as a catalytic investment in downtown is really related to what I just mentioned, which is those property taxes. Uh coming down and what it, what an impact. Uh that revenue source for the district has in our ability to maintain. Um kind of the safety net as well as societal um investments that we've always uh wanted to and have, and have made over the past decade. Okay, so the investments that we're making in the FY twenty-five budget are those that we believe can help us get back on track. Uh there are three primary. I apologize, my dog is insistent on saying things. Um. Our pri- our primary areas of focus are really um public safety, downtown and education. Um, you know what, I am to, please hold, I'm just gonna. Let her out. Okay, let's see if that helps. I am at home clearly and not at my office. Okay, so for public safety, uh we are investing in programs that make us uh safer and stronger. These include. Investments in getting the district to that path to four thousand officers. Um that's been a goal of the mayor's for some time, that's certainly a goal of our chief of police and. Um there are other ways that we're also um ensuring safety and security, and that includes investments in new technology. Uh including the enhanced CCTV and real-time crime center. Um all of which together, the human capital as well as the technology. Investments uh will help reduce crime and make our city safer. For downtown, uh this is kind of an area and a part of the agenda, obviously, that I have a major and the deputy mayor's office. For planning and economic development has a major role in. Um these include a whole variety of investments. Um because downtown um is obviously still uh the economic engine for our city. Uh it is home to thirty-five percent of our businesses. Uh downtown DC accounts for thirty-seven percent. Of the city's total property tax revenue as well as being home to forty-three percent of our workers. Um so all of these investments that we are recommending and proposing to council. Uh will help reposition um the central business district from being currently what is a very office-dominated neighborhood. Um where again, I'm, you know, was projecting that that reliance on office uh will be uh something that we have to overcome in the future. So we're trying to convert it into a mixed-use neighborhood. Um I want to talk uh just a little bit, uh because there's been much news made about it. Um about um the uh investment in the Capital One Arena. Um the big deal here is um a five hundred and fifteen million dollar capital investment. But uh it also means that we've secured not only the teams, but all of the music events. Uh basically activation for two hundred days out of every year through twenty fifty. So this is uh the type of um investment that happens once in a generation. Um and you can see here that uh, you know, we know that right now. In its current state, the arena generates fifty-four million dollars in DC tax revenue per year, which uh means a ten-year. Payback period for this investment. Um we anticipate, of course, that once the investment is made, that we'll see even larger uh returns than that. So hopefully even a, a shorter payback period. Um we know that the construction activity for the arena um as well as um other investments will render. A billion dollars in total economic activity, twenty-one million dollars in additional tax revenue. Um this is over the next three years as well as nearly five thousand jobs. So these are real uh returns to the city. Um we also know that, you know, the Capital One Arena alone is not going to reposition the rest of downtown. So we've been leveraging uh the recommendations of the Downtown Action Plan. To introduce new and creative ways of accelerating um the repositioning of downtown. So these, this is comprehensive. Includes business attraction incentives. Um that's uh right now the vitality fund. Um also investments to support near-term retail. Um and also uh we've proposed a conversion program. We did already um put into place the housing in downtown. Uh office to residential conversion uh regulations, but we're looking now uh to introduce a conversion program. That would um take uh an existing office building and incentivize it uh to reposition to be any. Type of new vibrant commercial use. So we call it office to anything inside uh my office. Uh but it's called the Downtown Activation Program um in the Budget Support Act. Okay. Let's see where we are and let me also track time. Okay. Um so the, the biggest thing that um, you know, we've heard back from people is, you know, how is. The downtown uh investment, are you doing that at the expense of um? Of the rest of the city? And I would say absolutely not. Um we continue to um. Uh invest uh in economic development, uh in our people, uh in the neighborhoods throughout the city. As well as in businesses throughout the city. And so downtown is just one of those neighborhoods. Um and um we can share here how we're looking at the investments that we're making across the city. So investing nearly. Four hundred million dollars uh in the next five years in our real estate portfolio across all eight wards. That's one of the projects that uh you mentioned and we can come back to that. Um these capital dollars uh continue to deliver housing, uh which is one of the major amenities. Um uh of our city. Uh we have to be able to attract more residents, new residents. Um as well as maintain affordability for existing residents in order for us to be successful. I have no idea what is going on with this dog. It's just. I let her out. She doesn't want, she wants to. Talk about other things, I guess. Okay.
Uh. Nina, the, the, the reality is, is we really can't hear the dog. You hear it way more than, than we do.
Okay.
So don't, don't worry.
Okay, good. That's good to hear. She's just very annoying because she's whining, because I think she wants to play. Um, okay, I've left her, so now I am not distracted either. Um but I am wrapping up here too, so we can get to your conversation and your question.
She, she's not complaining about the budget, your dog?
She might be. She might be saying, I don't see enough for dog parks in.
That's, that's what I'm thinking.
Exactly. Hey, by the way, I don't know if you saw this, but the mayor just announced. The first dog park, which is crazy that this is the first one, east of the river um uh late last week, so. Um speaking of dog parks, it is a priority for everybody across the city, um including my dog. Um, okay, so anyway, um I just wanted to just touch on a couple of things. About um four hundred million dollars, um you know, across the rest of the city. A majority of uh that funding, I think it's about seventy percent, is really to benefit Ward seven and eight. Um and um we are also with, through that investment. Delivering fifty-two hundred housing units, three thousand of which will be affordable. So these are significant investments. This mayor. Um has been bullish about uh delivering housing, housing production, as well as affordable housing production, and we continue to do that. So, next slide. Um I do want to just um talk about education. Uh this also has been something that has been. Um the mayor's priority consistently throughout uh her tenure and continues to be. Um. The thing, though, uh that folks are focusing on in this budget proposal. Um is the fact that uh over the past three years, we've been able to make significant investments that allow our schools. Um to pivot from the pandemic to reopen strong and to get back on track. Um but uh there is somewhat of an impact as those federal dollars burn off. Um and uh, you know, in a sense that there is an underinvestment in our education, but that is not the case. Um the mayor is investing in schools and investing in two programs that we know are working uh particularly well. Uh the first is the High Impact Tutoring. And the Advanced Technical Centers. Um so we've included a four point eight million dollar. Uh investment in High Impact Tutoring. This will allow us to continue small group evidence-based tutoring. That helps mitigate the effects of the pandemic and continues to be impactful on our students. And I just also want to highlight the Advanced Technical Center. Um this allows high schools, it allows us to bring high school students. Across the district to prepare for high wage and high demand jobs, which are typically technically focused. Um so these are the types of investments that we know will change the trajectory of students and their careers. Um and so uh this is really about, as we uh know that um. Businesses are coming to the District of Columbia in search of high-skilled talent. This allows that um our families. Um and uh the residents of the district continue to keep up with that pace of demand. Okay, I am going to look here to uh the specific investments that have been proposed for. Um Ward three. Um, you know, uh. You guys can go through this. I think you in fact have this deck, but seventy-four million dollars to renovate public schools. Um sixty-six million dollars to renovate facilities at UDC. Um including um uh. Funding for um some preliminary design of a new stu- of, for new student housing, and then twenty-four million dollars to modernize Chevy Chase Library. Um there are a number of Ward three investments in terms of transportation environment. Um, you know, streets, sidewalks, alleys, this is all part of that modernization effort. Um a hundred and sixty-four million dollars for pedestrian bicycle safety. We know that this continues to be of interest and a priority because we want people. Um of all modes to be able to move around the city safely. Um twenty-six million dollars for streetscape improvements to Connecticut Avenue. Um I was actually just driving by uh Cleveland Park earlier uh this weekend. Uh when I was visiting my mother, who is a Ward three resident, by the way. Um and uh, you know, they made a number of different improvements that I think make. Uh that stretch of uh Cleveland Park and Connecticut Avenue um much more functional. Um for those retailers as well as uh others, pedestrians. And then fifteen million dollars to install safety fencing. On Tapp Memorial Bridge. Um anyway, you can read down the list. I don't want to go through the whole thing, but obviously very transportation focused. Next. Um and I don't want to ignore my uh colleagues, um the two Mokers. Uh from Ward three, Matthew and Theodore. So thank you, gentlemen, uh for everything that you do, um supporting. Um communications between uh the Ward three community and. Um all of the agencies within the district. So with that, I will stop talking and turn it back over to you for any questions.
So but would you be sure that um I get this? Uh I'm now. The webmaster, and so I'm the one who's gonna put this up on our website. So please be sure you could ask Matthew to. So please be sure you could ask Matthew to get it to me.
Okay, will do.
Why don't you take it down so that people can see each other as they ask you questions? And I'd like to start. I, this is a very high level presentation. This is a very hyper local board commission. We've got a big concern at the Community Center Library. What happens there? It doesn't seem to fall under core services, a program with a proven track record, public safety, education, and isn't downtown realistically. But but it depends on public commitment as well as private money. And and it depends a great deal on how much it's accepted. If the if the public is not going to be able to afford making the kind of commitments that are needed may ensure that there's adequate parking, to be ensure that they're state of the art, as we keep being promised, state of the art community center and library. There was no new money in this budget for the community center. And I, that 24 million you mentioned on the last slide, most of that was already earmarked. I think there are a few million dollars more for the library. Realistically, for a board like us, and and one other thing I just pointed out, you you expect several years of 2% revenue growth. Realistically, are projects like a new community center and library with affordable housing with parking that presumably is at least partially going to be paid for by by the district? Is this stuff on hold for several years?
It is not. It is not. So as you know, we have an RFP out right now. But more importantly, I mean, there are a number of things in Demped's real estate portfolio that we're able to move forward with. So that $24 million for the Rec Center is really important. Oh, sorry, for the library is really important because it signals to the private market that there is money to replace facilities, right? And so that's what they're going to respond to is that certainty. Yes, it was in the budget last year, but as you recall, we re-up the five year capital budget every single year. So we kind of reestablish, it's kind of like a rolling budget, if you will. So it's important that that remain in that in that budget. And so that's why we call it out. But right now, on all of our real estate projects, regardless of where they are in the pipeline, if they're at the beginning of the process like this one is, or if they're underway, whether they're in the budget or not, you know, they all have the ability to move forward because they're either in a state where we are transacting and getting the project planned. And right now, we don't believe, until we get proposals back from the developers, we won't know if the $24 million is adequate or or needs some more. So we are continuing with that process. And as I said, we didn't call out specifically housing as like a catalytic investment because we've been making housing investments for the past decade. And we will continue to make housing investments. And we have different tools to be able to do that, low income housing tax credits, private funding. You know, there's a whole variety of tools in order to be able to move forward with housing. And so that's, we we're not stopping with with that project in particular, but many of our other projects, even if it's not specifically called out in the budget.
Let me go to other commissioners. Bruce Sherman?
Nina, this is Bruce Sherman. I'm a commissioner in District Two, which is in Ward Four. As you probably know, four of our seven single member districts are in Ward Four. And one area of great interest in in my area is Lafayette Elementary School and the budget reductions that they're facing there. I was on a quarterly ANC Commissioner's Call with Chair Mendelson two weeks ago and asked about the council's efforts to restore some of the funding that's been cut from the Lafayette budget. It's looking at a 22% or so budget reduction with staff salaries, teacher salaries it has to absorb, along with a reduction in its budget. Is there anything that you can tell us about that by any chance? Is there any insight you might have on the budget for Lafayette in particular?
I personally don't have that, but I will make sure that somebody gets that to you. Anyway, there's different ways that that we can get that information to you or have somebody come and talk to you specifically about that. I know that Deputy Mayor Kine, who's the Deputy Mayor for Education, as well as the chancellor, have looked through all the different plans and, you know, have, you know, assured, I think, all of us that, you know, the reductions that are proposed are being done so responsibly or are right sizing, you know, the investments that we've made in these schools. I don't, honestly, I don't want to pretend that I necessarily know what that means. So let me get the right resource and make them available to you.
No, I appreciate that. The school was looking at eight staff position cuts as a result. We're fortunate. It's a it's a privileged school. This is an area that benefits a lot from parent involvement. Lafayette just held its annual auction this past weekend. So they're in a much better position than many schools in the city. But many parents nonetheless in my district do ask about the cuts and wonder. So that's reason for my question. Thanks very much.
Well, maybe we, I'll I'll ask our my team members here if they can get back to you with at least some of the high level reasons that those decisions were made so that you have that.
Great, okay. Can I, can I just add, Bruce, to your thing? Nina, we we issued testimony at the budget oversight project and we've, we asked, so that was two weeks ago. We asked the chancellor and DPS, DCPS to come and talk to us, and it's been crickets. So the specific, the specificity in our testimony was, we understand there are issues. We don't want there to be cuts, but come talk to us. And so I just want you to know, nobody has, they've not responded, they've not talked to us.
Okay, so I saw Derek come off camera. Derek, do you want to say something?
Yes, thank you so much. I will have these requests encircled back to both Commissioner Sherman and Zeldin on the Lafayette Elementary School request for the budget conversation with DCPS and then information that we have that we can share.
And I suggest you circle back to everybody. I mean, for example, Commissioner Lynch.
Yes.
You choose. So Peter, you want to take the next question?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Albert, for being here. I've got basically two questions. The first one is that a lot of our community is very concerned with school overcrowding. It seems like parents from just about every school is reporting that. And then with the increase in housing, what sort of coordination goes on between Dimped and DCPS in anticipating those rise in numbers of projected students with new housing and what that will do with the schools? And then my second question is, there was a lot of excitement and talk around the Intelsat Building earlier in the year and wondering where that stands. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, you're welcome. So the, on the first question, both, oh my gosh. I mean, it's, I moved to get away from her and now she's back. Okay. So the, on terms of like tracking population growth, we all do that and share those trends year over year. So far, the district has not had an issue that we haven't been able to manage in terms of overcrowding. And, you know, you see almost, you know, kind of every year, you know, pretty active rebalancing and prioritization among the schools to make sure that there's, you know, that that usually it relates to other things, not necessarily population growth. So we have ability to absorb a growing population in the city and not have it dramatically impact crowding in schools. But if there's some, you know, I'll follow, I'll take this as a follow on to make sure that if there are issues that I'm unaware of, that we will, that I'll coordinate that with Deputy Mayor Kine. I will say in Ward Three specifically, we have not had the type of resident growth that we've seen in other parts of the city. And so that would be interesting if you're seeing numbers different or experiencing something different. I'd like to get that information.
Yeah, it's a pretty common concern among parents. I mean, I think the Ward Three Education Network meetings, that seems to be high on everybody's list. And then with the projected loss of teachers in classrooms, it's anticipated to just compound and get worse next year. So hopefully, if you could put that on on your radar, that'd be great.
Okay, will do. The, and then the second question, what was the second? Oh, Intelsat. So right now, I mean, as you know, it's privately, oh, it's, I think the land is owned by the State Department, the building is owned by a private party. We haven't been approached by anybody in Intelsat. I mean, I've spoken with Councilmember Fruman about his interest in seeing if there's something that the district can do to intervene or to kind of have a say in what happens at Intelsat. But personally, you know, I've been here for seven months now. And I just haven't really, I mean, has there been something that I should be paying attention to or reaching out to any parties about that? Because I just haven't gotten anything from folks about Intelsat in a while.
Well, I know State Board of Education Representative Goulet was very interested in the idea of expanding UDC opportunities. It's such an enormous piece of land that's been empty for so long now and seems like a great opportunity for housing, for schools, for any number of things that could help the city and the ward. So I know it seems like it hasn't been in the conversation lately, but it seems like such a worthwhile place and avenue to consider.
Yeah, I mean, I'm personally familiar with that building. When I worked at Metro, we looked at that building as a potential location for Metro's new headquarters site. We're kind of digging through all the options that were available. I know that there's been a major investment in that building to, I think, modernize it so that it could accommodate an education campus. So anyway, I'll, I'll, I'll kind of pay some attention to that and reach out and see if there's been any kind of further advancement. I mean, I'm open to, and we've actually been talking about, you know, that site as a prospect for, you know, if we were to recruit sort of a major employer, you know, what role could that property have? You know, at least in in being among the mix or in the mix. But it sounds to me that really an education, a future education use is really, you know, potentially a good fit. But again, open to hearing different ideas.
Okay, Jim, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Ms. Albert, for sharing this big picture vision of the budget for this year. My question is about, to try to get a little bit more historical context for these numbers. You said expenses are going up 7%. So my question is, there's $24 million in the budget for the library? And what was the number last year for that?
I believe it was 24 million or at least in that same range.
Okay, so expenses are going up 7%. That number is not going up at all.
These are operating expenses. Those expenses that I was talking about have to do with like Wamata's operating budget as a result of, you know, lower ridership and need or needing to close the gap. Collective bargaining agreements that the government has with various unions and what stipulated in those unions, in those CBAs and those collective bargaining agreements. You know, utility costs are rising quite dramatically right now. Those are, that's what's contributing to seven and a half percent expense increase. What you're asking about is whether or not construction costs are increasing. And so since we don't have a developer right now to help us estimate what the costs of those facilities are, we would not increase the budget at this time until we have more concrete information.
All right, but you're open to doing so if needed.
Yeah, what's necessary at this moment in terms of that process is to go through the process, work with, you know, get developers' proposals, see which one makes sense. And then from there, once we have kind of a, the four walls of a, of an understanding or of a deal, then we would decide to whether or not we needed to increase or or change the budget.
Okay, thank you. And I have the same question for $164 million in the budget for pedestrian and cycling safety improvements. What was that number last year?
I'll have to get back to you on what that number was last year.
Okay, please do. And are those expenses rising 7%?
Again, separate, separate operating expenses from capital improvement expenses. So in my, I mean, I'm trying to remember, because I was doing a lot of construction cost test, you know, kind of cost review last year. It just really depends on the category.
It would be helpful to know if, I'd love to hear, get, have you get back to me? If you could also tell me how much you you believe the expenses in this category have risen in the past year.
Okay, will do.
Okay, Michael?
And on that point, I suppose that the retrenchment on the bike lanes for Connecticut Avenue has some budget implications?
I don't, well, gosh, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I don't believe that 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 change has, is changing the budget proposal.
Be nice to know. The other thing is, and it's not exactly in your area, but, and your slide went too fast for me to read it. But as a former teacher at Chamberlain Vocational High School in in the city, I'm wondering if there's any conversations with DCPS in the city about re, you know, constituting the vocational high schools. I think they would be a great asset to our educational program. I don't, I don't think there are any. I could be mistaken. Here, Lynch, do you know whether we have any vocational high schools operating in the city at the moment?
Well, as it happens, Intelsat was was one idea for a potential one, but no, I would support the idea.
We can look into that. I I don't know if DC has a vocational high school.
They did. I mean, I taught, I taught at one, so I know.
Phelps is fully online.
Phelps is fully on, oh, thank you, Ted. And then.
Phelps is what? I'm sorry, Phelps is what?
It's it's online and has been online for years.
An online school.
Pardon me?
An online school as opposed to.
No, 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 I mean, it's, 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 my mistake. It is working, it's functional, it's an in-person academy that has been functioning for at least the last decade or so. And you could add to that the Construction Trades Academy over at Cardoza.
So I will say, what I was going to say is that there are vocational programs in the district. And Ted, thank you for calling out Phelps, which is a high school. But look, I think one of the things, just kind of zooming back out for a second, I think that there's a lot of opportunity for continued kind of specialized education at the high school and post-high school levels. Because we know that a lot of the jobs of the future, which include, you know, technology even don't require, you know, computer science degrees or four-year and advanced degrees. Many of them do, but not all of them do. So I think that at least from an economic development perspective, you know, the job education and preparedness as well as certification programs often sometimes come through vocational programs, sometimes come through community college programs and and two-year degrees are all things that we should be looking at.
Okay, Mikela, do you have a question? Please keep it short. We're now at, we've got 50 minutes left of this meeting and I'm going to try to land it.
Yes, I I do have a very quick question. Ms. Albert, you mentioned investments in pools. My question is, what's the status of the Wilson Aquatic Center? It's been closed for over a year and I think it's time to invest in that facility and get it open, particularly since, as I understand it, the DC government is investing in a new pool at Walter Reed. It'd be great if we could get the old pool that would be open year around, up and running before turning one's focus and attention on a new pool, which as I understand, it will be an outdoor pool. In addition, that pool is already. In addition, that pool is already located very close to, uh, the Tacoma Park Pool. So anything you can, anything you have to say about, um, potentially opening the, um, Wilson Aquatic Center sooner rather than later.
Okay, um, I feel woefully unprepared for our conversation today. I should have, um, I will look into that. Um, I don't know if there's, trying to see if there's kind of a teammate of mine that could answer the exact status of, uh, the Wilson Pool. Um, but if not, uh, we'll also make sure to get that back to you. And I'm sorry again, that I don't have some of these answers. Derek, I see you coming online.
Yes, I don't have that particular response as of right now, but I will work with DPR and circle back to you directly and to the commissioners as well.
Thank you.
Let me, can I ask that, I see two new hands up. We have the statehood resolution take up. We have zoning to take up and we're about, uh, almost eight fifteen. Mark, uh, is, can we move on to those issues? Is there some?
I just wanted to let the community know that Councilman Fumens newsletters that Wilson will be open, I believe, May thirty-first.
State's alive. That's great news. I mean, Deputy Mayor, just so you know, this is a, this has been a drama that has gone on way too long. And they decided the AC system was broken, so they fixed that. And then after they fixed that, and that took a year, they decided, I, I forget what, the doors weren't in compliance. So they, they've done this sort of sequentially instead of simultaneously, and it's taking forever. Elias, do you have a very short comment or a question?
I was just gonna let everybody know that DGS had told Councilmember Fruman's office that it would be open by Memorial Day, but that's what they were aiming for. So hoping that's his case.
Okay, uh, you know, Arthur, thank you very much for coming. And it's good to at least meet you uh, electronically. Uh, um, I look forward to dealing with your office. I think we all do as we go forward with the, uh, our process.
Appreciate the time and look forward to seeing you all again as well.
Okay, um, why don't we, uh, given the shortness of time, let's go to the, um, the, uh, Commissioner Lynch's, uh, statehood, uh, resolution, DC statehood resolution. Who do you want brought up for that?
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, I'll just quickly go through the resolve section. Um, what this resolution is asking for is to support our representative Eleanor Holmes Norton, uh, her call for statehood in the House and Senate, HR fifty-one and S fifty-one. Uh, it is calling on the mayor and the council to actively petition and to keep, uh, fighting for statehood. It, uh, rejects, uh, the, the imposition of Congress on, uh, home rule and our, uh, local governance, which is in fact happening, uh, this week. And then it asks the mayor and the council to consider increasing funding to groups like the New Columbia Statehood Commission, uh, which is already funded by the city DC vote and other groups that advocate for statehood. Um, and then it also asked for the mayor and the council to convene, uh, a conference of, uh, statehood advocates and citizens to help strategize for achieving statehood, um, both here at home and across the country. And we have four guests with us, which I'm very thankful, uh, they're here. Um, there are Kelsey Adams from DC Vote. Uh, we have Reverend Wendy Hamilton, who is a fellow ANC. Uh, Shelley Tompkins, who lives in, in my SMD and works with a group called DC Statehood PAC. And Noah Wills, who was a AU student who started Students for DC Statehood and now runs a group, uh, DC Statehood Compact and DC Statehood Pledge.
I have to promote all of the speakers, but could I ask all of the speakers to be extraordinarily tight with your remarks?
Yeah, we've, we've talked about that. Um, Kelsey, do you want to go first with DC Vote?
Sure. Hey, everybody. Thanks for having us. And I will keep it brief. Um, I know you all are not new to the issue. DC statehood is what's needed for the nearly seven hundred thousand disenfranchised residents, including yourselves, to have our voices heard in our nation's Congress. Um, DC Vote has been working closely with all the advocacy organizations around the city and nationally to create, to be a part of various coalitions and to create a statehood table that ensures that all residents have some type of access to what's going on in Congress. This week alone, we will have another attack from our nation's Congress. Wednesday, there will be a bill on the House floor, not a hearing, but an actual vote will be made against DC home rule. Um, and that is gonna be for the DC Crimes Act. That is just one of eight, uh, anti-home rule attacks we have seen from the GOP in the hundred and eighteenth Congress. Um, so I feel like, you know, no more needs to be said from me. You guys get the picture. We need more residents. We need more folks on the ground making move and shaking the streets for DC statehood. So that's my ask. Please, whatever my colleague Noah comes and, and asks of you, all of you guys could just be so supportive of his pledges and compacts as that is what we're using for verbiage to move this issue forward. And the message is clear. We want Congress to keep their hands off DC. And I'll pass it over to Reverend Wendy Hamilton, since I see she's off of camera. So it's like she's ready to go.
Thank you, Kelsey. I appreciate that. And thank you for the invitation. Peter, uh, greetings, three G, three, four G. Thank you for giving us a few minutes to just come on and reiterate how important it is for us to advocate for DC statehood. You know, DC statehood transcends ideology. It is all about justice for DC residents. And so that's what we're fighting for. We need all hands on deck. While we know there was a referendum in twenty sixteen that was very highly supported, we need action to be put, you know, on the ground in response to that kind of support. It's, it's fine to give voice support, but we need boots on the ground. We need voices talking not only to Congress and going down and visiting some of these members who are trying to override home rule, but also rallying our neighbors and reminding them of the taxation without representation fairness, unfairness that is continuing to inflict all of us. So tonight, we all just wanted to come. We're very much in support of this resolution that you all are preparing for tonight. It is critically important, uh, especially as I said, at this time, that as many DC resident voices as we can get on the record can be there. This is, uh, an issue that's going to be ongoing, but we believe that the momentum has shifted, is shifting. We do believe that DC statehood is possible. That's why we are continuing to fight. That's why we are continuing to protest. That's why we're continuing to show up at hearings and, and to lobby officials, because we do think that it's possible. It's part of the American story. DC needs to be included in that. And so we thank you all for taking up the charge and leading it by putting a resolution forward that reminds everybody that DC needs to be the fifty-first state. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Reverend Wendy. Uh, Noah, you wanna tell us what you've been up to and, and what you're doing right now?
Sure, thank you. Hi, everybody. Um, my name is Noah Wills. I'm a resident of Ward Three. Um, I organized three statehood initiatives, as Peter said, and I've often heard that ANC commissioners don't often know what they can do to support the issue. Um, so some things that you can do, obviously pass this resolution, add your name to the ANC Statehood Pledge, which thank you to Commissioners Lynch and Ferguson for doing already. Um, and of course, attending DC Lobby Days and attending hearings when they try to attack our home rule. Um, this resolution is important because we've never seen so many attacks on our home rule specifically. Currently tracking over thirty bills right now that would interfere in our own self-governance. And some of these measures, um, would even repeal DC's home rule entirely. So this resolution today calls on the, the DC government to take more of an active role in petitioning Congress for statehood and to stay out of our, uh, self-governance and obviously increase funding for statehood organizations and, uh, individuals. And while it might not seem critical with some of the other challenges facing our city, and trust me, we're usually pushed to the end of, of agendas. If we don't react against these stalled statehood efforts or attacks on our home rule, they will not stop. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Noah. Um, Shelley?
Yes, thank you. Um, I am a proud resident of this ANC for many, many years. Um, and I am on the board of the DC Statehood PAC. And I won't add to all of the wise words of everyone else. We play a slightly different role that the other, uh, groups um, legally can't, can't play. Um, we have a long-term strategy to attempt to impact, um, campaigns in the sense of supporting our supporters in Congress, uh, financially and going after those who have opposed us. Um, now, obviously, this takes a lot of money, um, to impact these campaigns. And so it's a long-term strategy. Uh, we've been working for about a couple of years now. And, uh, we are now launching a, uh, social media campaign, uh, to continue to raise money. Uh, and again, it's the long game, but it can be very critical because uh, when we look at originally how we got home rule to begin with, um, it was really involving, uh, influencing congressional campaigns, um, out of state. And that, that led to a changeover, um, on the district committee of the leadership and ultimately to home rule. So, uh, we have a different role and we would appreciate your financial support or any other kind of support. The DC Statehood PAC, um, we have a website. Go and look at it. Thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioners, questions, comments? Do we go to a vote?
Uh, do we want to take, uh, Corinthe, is that a question from you?
Oops, no, that's from a long time ago.
Does anybody else, any, any audience have any questions? Or any Commissioners? I guess we went through that.
So you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I move that we, uh, vote to support the resolution.
Second. All in favor? Bruce, you're the one who's asking for numbers. So, uh, let me see if I can move my, uh, so this is, uh,
It's six zero, yeah.
Okay, okay. Done. Um, good.
Thank you, Commissioners, and, and thank you very much, uh, Kelsey, Reverend Wendy, Shelley, Noah. We really appreciate your time and all the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, look, I'm gonna take the prerogative of the chair and just move us through the rest of the agenda. If we have time at the end, we will reinstate a few minutes for, uh, uh, non-agenda comments from residents. Um, uh, I think next on the agenda is Bruce and, uh, and me talking about what, what we heard at the zoning commission and where we are on that issue. We have sent around, we have sent to OP, uh, a proposal that is, is ours, not, is not this uh, commissions. It grows out of what we heard when each of us testified uh, at the April twenty-ninth, uh, zoning commission. I think both Bruce and I thought that, uh, uh, the Chair, Anthony Hood, and his Vice Chair effectively invited us to see if we could, uh, come to some compromise with OP. Um, this may be rope it though. This may be, uh, we, we have, but we have written, Bruce and I have written uh, proposing a sort of split the baby, uh, compromise on height and some changes that need corrections that need to be made in, uh, lot coverage. All, all we've gotten back is, uh, that OP is considering it. Um, and what we've asked for is that OP, if OP sees this as a viable route to try to find some middle ground here, that it declare, uh, uh, this proposal not inconsistent with the comp. Um, we just ask you to look at it. It is not something we're gonna act on tonight. It's really not something we can act on unless OP uh, steps forward. Uh, Bruce, do you have any else you want to add?
Well, of course, we're mindful there is a second hearing on May twenty-third. Uh, we're very well aware that those that spoke, uh, from the community, um, at the, at the first hearing, uh, on April twenty-ninth, were those that supported the position that OP has taken. And there is a wealth of, of public comment to come, uh, in opposition to OP's positions. Um, again, just to reiterate what Peter said, um, there did seem to be an overture to try to come to terms. Uh, we are managing, as everyone knows, weighing competing imperatives. Um, there is support, of course, in the community for housing, including affordable housing. And there is, um, significant concern about overdevelopment. So as we, as a commission and all of us in the community together weigh these competing imperatives and try to balance those two, um, at the end of the day, there's no magic formula for this. We know what OP is proposing in terms of eighty-foot buildings at the civic site and seventy-foot buildings elsewhere. Uh, we are sensitive to the concerns the community has expressed over and again about building height. It isn't the only thing that matters, but it is a concern to neighbors. Um, and so we have taken a look at what we might be able to do to bring about a resolution that would, given where we are right now, um, be, uh, we think an appropriate response. Um, and so that's, uh, that's what we're looking at trying to do. But again, trying to honor all voices in the community, hearing the voices, uh, concerning housing. And I'm very well aware of the survey results with respect to housing at the civic site. We did not ask about housing elsewhere on the avenue. Um, I will note that in the further survey I did of my own constituents, specifically about the zoning for the rest of the avenue, and I've shared that publicly in terms of, uh, my community's concerns, ongoing concerns about height. But I had two hundred and thirty responses from my single-member district and a hundred and nine written comments. I read every single comment. And parsing those comments, again, lots of concern about too much development, um, but not expressing outright opposition to housing elsewhere on the avenue. So I've tried to weigh the comments from my single-member district, the comments from the survey results generally, as we weigh these competing imperatives. So, uh, just further, Peter, to your remarks.
And I, and I'd just say, uh, a coda to this. If by chance OP comes back and is interested in this, I think, I think we will come to you uh, perhaps looking for a very short special meeting. Now, I think the odds of that are low. But if we could, if we could walk into the May twenty-third continuance of, uh, the zoning commission meeting, with some agreement, even if, um, even if tentative, uh, I think we would do this community a huge good. So just, uh, I, I hope you'll take a look at the letter that I've circulated that Bruce and I sent to OP and just be ready to, to, to opine on it if, uh, if we get any movement on OP's stuff. And with that, I think we should cut this off and go to the, to the Transportation Committee issues that, uh, that, uh, Nash is gonna bring up. Jim?
Okay, uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, there are two, uh, two different types of things that I wanted to, uh, touch on tonight. One is procedural. Be, uh, we, we're putting, I put before you a week ago a list of members and also the mission statement. Uh, and this is for ANC approval. Uh, but then secondly, there is a, uh, more of a substantive matter that has come up just very, very recently. Uh, and this is just kind of, we're still working on it. This is FYI, but I wanna, um, turn it over briefly to Michaela to let this, to give the community a heads up on what's going on with the so-called Better Bus Proposal. Michaela, are you there?
You want to do first, Jim? I mean, do you want us to vote on membership or do you want us?
Yes, I'm here.
Well, um, well, I think, let, let, Michaela won't, won't take long, but this is just, this is an example of why I think we need a transportation, uh, committee. Uh, and a little heads up about what we're gonna be doing and also an appeal to the community to let us hear from you, because, uh, this is something that's happening now that's gonna really affect our community. Michaela?
Uh, yes, thanks, Jim. I'm Michaela Platschler. I'm a Ward Four, Bardaby Woods, um, resident. I just wanted to mention quickly that Wamata has released its Better Bus Network Proposal. The public can comment on the bus route overhaul starting, uh, today through Monday, July fifth, twenty twenty-four. So we have nine weeks to respond. Wamata's proposed changes will affect metro bus routes across our ANC, including the M four, E four, and L two. And, um, many of us feel it's not going to be a change for the better. I would encourage everyone interested in bus transit to review Wamata's proposal. You can share your input at betterbus.wamata.com. The, um, Bus Transit Working Group of the newly-formed ANC three, um, four G Transportation Committee is reviewing Wamata's proposal as we speak. Uh, Commissioner Nashville, update everyone on the newly-formed, um, uh, committee. Thanks.
Okay, thank, thank you, Michaela. And I, I wanna underscore something that's, uh, relevant to our previous discussion on the civic core. These new proposed bus lines. These new proposed bus lines uh, would uh, cut out uh, the E four from uh, the crosstown McKinley Street Route and put it down on military. And it, it would have the effect of further isolating the civic core at the very time that we're talking about redeveloping it and putting uh, perhaps affordable housing there. And so to me, it, it's just a si- a sign of the left hand of the city not knowing what the right hand is doing. But more on that later. Okay. So before, uh, what I uh, sent out to you is a list of our uh, of our proposed members. Uh, and this is not a final uh, list because uh, although I had uh, been asking him for weeks uh, to, to see if he could suggest one. Commissioner Sherman sent me a, another name who sounds like he'd be a great addition, but I, we only just got that uh, today. So we're, we'll be coming back to you again uh, with uh, additional uh, members uh, probably. But this is, this is what we uh, this is what we have right now. These are members who have expressed interest. They've been to at least one meeting. And we've explained uh, that we have a collaborative approach towards decision making and so far it's working, I think. Well, you know, we, we'll see, we're, we're kind of testing it out. And I also laid out uh, expectations which are that uh, a, a committee member will be putting in uh, uh, more, a little more time at least outside of committee meetings on the work uh, that we're doing. The, the working group on better buses is already uh, doing things as you heard from Michaela. We are also uh, putting out a survey. Uh, the, the, the uh, safety working group is the other working group. They are putting out a survey right now. Uh, trying to ask everyone in the community uh, about what, what kinds of uh, transportation and or transportation safety issues do they see and do they want us to be aware of? So this is an example of, of what we're trying to do with, you know, we, we have a ways to go. We want to engage uh, with the community and I want to encourage anyone in this community. Whether you're a member or not, you're always welcome to come to our meetings. Uh, there is a meeting, uh, our, our transportation committee uh, will meet on the uh, first Thursday uh, of every month at six forty five. We're going to be doing it by Zoom next month, and I'm gonna have to work with uh, you, I think, uh, Peter, to, to get, to figure out how that, you know, how we can, how we can get the A and C Zoom account to work. And the uh, the Better Bus Working Group, Michaela would love for people to come to that, especially now. And they, they meet, uh, they're gonna be meeting May twenty five at three P M. In the library and uh, in the upstairs meeting room. Okay, so uh, that's just a, you know, a little, a little bit of an update. Uh, but I, I wa- I would like us, if we can, to vote to approve the membership list that I submitted to you a week ago and our mission statement, but is there discussion on that?
I think Bruce, uh, besides offering uh, a candidate to join the committee uh, raised some issues about people serving on multiple standing committees, and I think, I think he has a point there. Um, Bruce, you want to articulate that?
Let me, let me first just um, um, mention the, my candidate. Um, Jim, there were several members of my single member district that attended your meetings early on. Um, and they uh, for various reasons decided they could not serve. Um, I have spoken obviously to them. I've spoken to a number of other of my constituents. I have been particularly interested in having someone from my single member district who is deeply experienced in transportation issues. As we know, in the fifteen thousand or so, among our fifteen thousand residents, we have some very accomplished professional people with a lot to give if they're just asked to serve. So Tom Downs is my candidate. Tom Downs is a former D dot director. He's former chairman of the Board of Wamata. He's former president of Amtrak. He's former head of the New Jersey Transit Authority. Uh, he is one of the most experienced transportation executives, um, frankly, in the region, if not the country. He happens to be one block over from me on Oliver Street. Um, and I um, uh, I didn't have to twist his arm, but we had a number of conversations about his serving on the committee. So I want to put his name forward. Uh, if it's possible, he is prepared to serve. He's told me he's willing to do that. So if there is a way to uh, simply add lib his addition to the list tonight and move that forward, I'd be prepared to do that. Secondly, another constituent, Brian Heilman, has had expressed interest in serving. Um, I've asked Brian um, to confirm that for me, uh, and we're having continuing conversations. So Commissioner Nash, I may come back to you regarding uh, Brian Heilman. Um, those are the, those are the candidates. Tom Downs is confirmed. The issues that I raised um, earlier today in an email are essentially um, three. One, you've already addressed, which I am proud and happy that you have, and I commend you for this, and that is to um, tap the um, sentiment of the community as to the issues that matter most to them. I think it's very important that we on a commission reflect broadly community concerns. It is incredibly helpful to have the energy, the insights, the ideas of committee members. Um, but it's also equally important that when committee members come forward with recommendations to the commission, we are reasonably assured that those recommendations reflect to some extent the, the, the sentiment of the community. Because we're speaking on behalf of the whole community when, when they do that. Secondly, I want to also commend your attentiveness to pressing issues of transportation. You've already indicated the Wamata better bus problem, the E four issues. So again, commend you for that. I would suggest also that the um, committee and perhaps you're already doing this, and if you are, then um, a kudos to you in advance. Um, track what D dot in its workings is doing where we would have by way of a resolution that we would adopt based on the committee's recommendations have something to hang a resolution onto for practical impact. In other words, that the work of the committee would, would be tangible and, 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 and bring about um, positive change quickly for the community. Commissioner Gosling?
I would just, I'd just like to focus on, Jim, Jim has before us a, a list of members. I think he has said already that he would accept town down, so I think we could just add it to the list, but
No, no, I did not say that.
You did not? Alright.
No, 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 no. I mean, I, we, he, 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 we would love to have someone with all of that expertise. Uh, but uh, we're, the, the, I think the, my, my committee uh, would, would not uh, that, that's just not the way we've been operating so far. Way, the way we've been operating is people come to a meeting at least once. Uh, they see how we operate. We make sure that, that, that uh, they're okay with it. We have uh, some collaborative uh, procedures. We want to make sure the person understands. So it's kind of like we, 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 we have an on-ramp uh, for people. And um, Tom Bulger, for example, I mean, I, I'm a little worried that this, this man might be uh, overqualified for what we're doing. And Tom Bulger came, for example, another fine uh, uh, person from uh, Commissioner Sherman's district with incredible resume. Uh, but after a meeting or two, uh, he uh, decided he, he did not have time to, to stick with us. And so before we put someone uh, before you for membership, I think it's better that, you know, the, the person have a chance to, to be with us and, and, and so on.
Hey, can I just say, um, I, I'm not sure I agree with the, that approach, but let's focus on the issue of this setting up this committee because I keep hearing things where it sounds as if the committee is already functioning and we haven't even voted for the members yet. So I'm, I'm concerned that we so, so uh, Bruce, you've heard he is, he wants the delay on Tom Downs. I, I, I'm not sure why, but, but that's a, his prerogative. It's his motion that's gonna be on the floor here. The other, uh, uh, you raised one other issue which you have not yet addressed, which is people on multiple, this is, I'm addressing Bruce here, people on multiple standing committees. Um, do you want to take that up?
No, I just, I just think what we're, what we're about is broadening the franchise. Uh, extending opportunities to more of our community members, hearing a diversity of views. Um, ensuring that we have um, as many people that might want to come on these committees and going out and actively seeking them. So, so yeah, I think it's important um, that we take that into consideration.
I, let me just, uh,
Me too.
Stand behind Bruce on that one. I, I
Well, yeah, me too.
I think that there are a number of people on your list who are on Raze. And I just, I, I guess I wonder whether uh, I mean, that, you know, let's not hear the same voices from all, you know, in different guises. Let's hear them on one committee or another. So I, I, I
Okay, well, so then would you, are you, um, what, is the idea then that we should ask these people to uh, remove themselves from one of these committees before we approve it? Do you want to wait uh, another month? We, by the way, you have approved two other members of the committee. The uh, that's the, the two co-chairs, Cal and Michaela. They, they have been approved, so they're already on there. But uh, what, what would you have me do with these people who are on multiple, uh, another, like the race committee?
Let me propose this, that we as a commission discuss this, and it can be now, it can be later. We need to make a decision on this and move forward, or we could say, Jim, in light of the criteria we're advancing right now and in light of my candidate and maybe one other that you could take another look at your membership list and have private conversations with those that are sitting on other committees currently. I mean, we have not established yet a um, a bylaw that there can only be one. We haven't done that. We could do that. Um, I just think that it would be important uh, for us as a commission to uh, articulate that view and then let community members sitting on more than one committee now decide themselves where they wish to devote their energies.
I, I, I think it, it might be wise, Jim, to, to, to to have a discussion with people on the, I mean, we, we do not have a bylaw, so this is, we, but, but I, uh, before I vote for this list, I'm gonna, I'm gonna want to know. I mean, Ron Eichner, I think is on both, is, is on your list and is on a, a long time um, member of Raze. Uh, so I just, I, 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 I think hearing from multiple voices uh, in the community not hearing from the same ones under different uh, uh,
Yeah, well, alright, but let, let me just say though that, you know, you it's not an either or type of thing, that there's quite a, quite a large number of people who are on this committee. Uh, and so the, the ones who are on multiple ones are, are a minority. And if it means getting rid of them, uh, you're, you know, is that really what you want to do? Uh, have, so we have fewer, fewer participation, less engagement or?
I, I favor, I favor one committee assignment per community member so that we have more community members serving on committees. It's, that's, that's simply
But it doesn't, but that not, that doesn't make any sense because by getting, you don't increase other people coming on by getting rid of someone who's already on it.
No, you go, no, you go recruit another committee, a community member to sit on the, on the committee. That's how it works.
Let some other commissioners talk. Peter Lynch?
Um, I, I'm hearing everybody on this. I'm not totally um, decided in my mind, but I think one thing to maybe consider is the difference between being a chair on a committee, uh, being a member on a committee. And then also thinking about um, having, and I know this is more uh, big picture, but having committees like we have now with Raze where they are fully run by community members. I'm not saying, Jim, you should step down by any means, but something we should consider long term in the spirit of what Bruce is talking about is having committees that are solely the community members so that we bring in more community members. I mean, I, I'm a commissioner because Jerry Mallett asked for me to uh, check out the uh, the C A, the Community Advisory Committee of the S A P. And that sort of uh, got me more involved in things. And so to the extent that we can pull more people into the process, I think we do much better. Uh, how exactly we do that, I'm not sure, but maybe thinking about chair, chairmanships of committees, membership on committees, and then, you know, uh, just something to think about, so.
Jim, it's really to you at this point, and we've got fifteen minutes to go. Um, how do you want to handle this? You could push, you could, you could put your list forward and we could vote on it as is. Uh, you could hold until the next meeting.
Well, Peter, I'm, yeah, and I, I'm fine either way. I, I don't want to uh, uh, push this, but I, I'm getting mixed messages from you because on the one hand, you said we're already doing things and yet the membership slate hasn't been approved, but on the other hand, you also suggested we should wait. And in any event, I do want to, I mean, I, I'm, I'm get down on my knees to have Tom, uh, Mr. Downs join us. So we'll be coming back uh, on this. And well, what I could do is we could approve this. Uh, but we'll revisit it next, next meeting, and I will have conversations with the people on multiple committees and uh, you know, kind of get, get back to you on, on uh, your concerns on that. How, how does that sound?
Bruce?
Sounds fun to me.
Alright, well then we're gonna put forward this list and we're gonna vote on it.
Okay.
You're gonna have, but you, with the, with the, with the proviso, you're gonna talk to people who are on multiple standing committees about
Yes.
What is their choice? And you're going to talk to uh, the candidates, other commissioners, including Bruce's uh, candidates, uh, you're gonna talk to them too about, about about membership. I'm not saying you're making a commitment. I'm just saying you, you, you commit to talk to them, right? Okay.
That's right. I will commit to talk to them and I'll share the, the, your concerns and I'll get back to you on, on how the conversation goes, correct?
So let me just also then uh, suggest this, and this is not something for tonight. But since this is coming up and something I think we need to address a little bit more formally. And so I'm going to suggest that we may look at uh, amending our bylaws on this issue. Um, so that we have it more firmly um, in our uh, protocols as to uh, membership and participation on committees. Um, just to be clear though, so that I can come, go back to Tom Downs. Uh, um, I'm, I'm hearing that there's a bit of a, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Commissioner Nash, of kind of a of, of, not a vetting process, but a getting acquainted process or something. Um, I'm not quite sure what I tell him uh, as to
Oh, tell him, tell him to, please, tell him to please come to our next uh, Transportation Committee meeting, which will be the uh, as I said, it'll be a Zoom first, first Thursday in June. Also at six forty five. Also, uh, I would, I'm gonna, we're also gonna be, I'm gonna be at the uh, bus working group. I, I already gave the date and time for that. That's May twenty five, three P M. Saturday. Because I'm assuming that's the working group he would want to be in. And so if he, if he, you know, I, I would, if he could please come to those meetings, we can get going. Uh, uh, and, you know, he'll be, we'll, we'll have him on next month.
Okay, look, it's uh, there are there are a number of people with their hands up. I, I'm, uh, I will go to you, Cheryl and Michelle and Tal, but I want it to be really short. This is an issue that um, uh, I, I, I think is, we basically have an agreement among ourselves about how you're gonna handle. Um, uh, so uh, uh, Michelle?
Um, yeah, I just, I mean, you haven't given the names yet, so I don't know who is on this committee, but I've heard a few things from various people in the community. I'm, I'm very um, a little concerned that this may turn into basically an outgrowth or be act like an advocacy group, um, particularly on the very divisive issue of bike lanes. Where I think we can pretty much assume the community is pretty split. Um, you know, we've kind of seen this movie play out already and um, I, I would hope that we don't end up with a committee where they refer to other community members as opposition, among other things. And you know, or people being, who are already on advocacy, advocacy groups that use these committees to further their goals. And I would say if they address bike lanes, there should be a fair survey that the whole A and C can review before it goes out to find out where the community really is. So I would at least ask for that. Thank you.
Yeah, I can, I can respond to that. We, we did ta- touch a little bit on the uh, concept C notion and uh, we, we work uh, in a, a modified consensus forum. Uh, we do not vote. And uh, there, there were, there was a diversity of views on that, and that, that is why I'm bringing to uh, the A and C, the, the proposal that I am. Uh, we are not, we, we did not want to take a position on whether there should or should not be uh, the lanes there in Connecticut or Concept C for the, for the very reasons that you said. This is something that there, there's a diversity of opinion on in our community and on our committee. But there was uh, an agreement that um, that the But there was, uh, an agreement that, um, that the A and C should invite, uh, the acting director to explain the decision in light of the fact that the commission uh, has already supported Concept C, and we don't, we don't know why they did that.
Jim, can I just cut in here? One, Cheryl, the list has been on the website for an entire week. Uh, um, uh, we can have Jim read it before, but Jim, the uh, uh, the issue of your recommending, uh, that, uh, Director Kirschbaum come and explain is one of the things that troubles me about this committee, which is it's already acting as if it's a committee and we haven't even approved the members yet. So I think that in fact, I think we're gonna invite Director Kirschbaum anyways next month, because we've got bio-retention basins to go, so we'll invite her for that purpose too. But I don't think we should be taking up recommendations of the Transportation Committee before we have a Transportation Committee approved by this A and C. So I.
Well, you do, you do though, there, you have a committee approved with three members, but and, but all right, a- anyway, well, there's no point in quibbling about that. So do it, do it, shall I read the, the membership list that I have, or, or what?
I think you should read it, and then, uh, well, wait one second, let's see if we can, uh, kill multiple birds with the, a single stone. Um, Cal, a, a very short comment.
Yeah, two quick things. One is, um, that, um, that on, on ramping or onboarding process that Jim alluded to, it's kind of, we get to know each other, like every single member that's on uh, James's list, potential member has, we know, we've sat with, we, we have all this, we have an understanding of that they're committed to working between the meetings and so forth. So we just wanna give any new candidates, and we certainly want candidates from, um, S and B two, absolutely. Um, so he could be an extremely valuable addition, we just, that's just the way we've been operating since the beginning. Second thing is, I don't understand the logic that says if members are on more than one committee, it, it somehow precludes a diversity of membership, because you can have as many members as we want to. I mean, no, that's, I just fail to understand the logic, how they're, how they seem to be treated as if they're mutually exclusive.
Corinthea, very short.
Was that for me?
No, Corinthea had her hand up.
Yes, 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 I have my hand up. I would just like to say, you know, you guys talk about, we need diversity of thought. We wanna hear from members of the community, and I just think, like, I don't understand why you would say someone can't serve on multiple committees when we all live in this community and all the issues someone may be interested in, and they should be able to do what they wanna do. I just think it's another means of trying to silence people on, you don't like their particular view. So I think any member of the community should be able to join whatever committee they're on, regardless of if they participate in RACE or Z D D or whatever. Let people participate.
And I wa- I'd like to, uh, further her comment by, by telling you, we have one African-American member of our committee, one. And that happens to be someone who's also on the race committee. So if we get her, if we lose her because of your concerns here, I think we become less diverse.
Um, I, I think then what you could do is read your membership. I continue to have a concern in this area.
Okay, all right.
And this list, my approval, my vote for this list to be, um, contingent on you talking to members about, uh,
Okay, I, I promise I will, I, I will, uh, make the effort to talk to all of them about this. All right, so I'm gonna read.
Commissioner Nash, before you read the, the, the list of names, but what are we, what are we saying by this? Commissioner Nash is gonna talk to them, and then what happens?
Well, I'm gonna come back and report to you on the, what the result of my conversations were with these people. I'm also gonna be coming back, uh, I hope, with Tom Downs as a, as an additional member to, to give us membership in all the S M Ds. That's what I'm, that's what I promised to do in our next meeting.
My understanding of this conversation is you're gonna encourage them to, to pick the committees that they want.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna do it, but I'm gonna tell them that two commissioners, uh, have, have asked that they do so. I have, uh, um, that, that, that's what I've heard, and I'll tell them, two commissioners have raised this concern, and what's their response to that?
Does that satisfy you, Bruce?
It, it does, and, and because I'm sensitive to community comments that we've just heard about restricting participation on committees as one's already sits on another committee. I just wanna say that we are a district and A and C of fifteen thousand residents. We typically have, right now, we've got thirty-seven people on this call, maybe we had fifty at the peak tonight. We have to be mindful that there are thousands and thousands of people in our A and C who never participate in anything related to the A and C. It's my job as a commissioner to go out and find people, as it is each of our, uh, each, the job of each of us on the commission, and I sought to do that, obviously, with Tom Downs, to bring him in, he's not participated in anything before. Um, so, um, that's why I'm saying this, because I'm, I'm very mindful of an appearance that the A and C is a small group of people who make decisions on behalf of the community, often without sufficient community input, so that's why I'm proposing it.
Let, let me just remind, because we're just about at the nine o'clock hour, um, let's keep our comments short on the rest of this, uh, this meeting. So with that, uh, you read, read the list and let's get on.
All right, I'll read the list. So all, as I said already, Cal, Simone, and Michaela Platzer are, are members, they are co-chairs. Then there's Karen Abrams, uh, she, excuse me, Karen Abrams is from, uh, Single Member District Six. Andrew Auerbach, Single Member District Five. Uh, Ron Eichner, uh, uh, oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry, I think, yeah, I'm sorry, I was reading from the wrong list. Uh, Ron Eichner from Single Member District Six, Allison Fitzsimmons, Single Member District Three, Megan Gibbons, four, Burnett, Bernadette Gibbons, four, Ronald Kahn, five, Michael Katzman, one, Liz Nagy, seven, Matt Osolinski, seven, Josh Rising, five, and Maria Sims, five.
Okay, uh, you've moved this group.
So I, yeah, I moved that the A and C appoint these people to be members of the transporta- the A and C's three, four G Standing Transportation Committee.
Do you have a second? Hello, folks. All second. Um, is the proviso that you speak to them about the concerns I have in vision? It's okay. So are we gonna go to a vote? Um, all in favor of appointing these members, uh, to the Transportation Committee, raise your hand, please. Okay. Was that everybody? Was Zach there?
Yes, he was there, it's six zero.
Right, that's me.
And then I also have a mission statement, which I can read briefly, it's also been up for a week, uh, that I'm asking for approval. The mission statement of the A and C three, four G Transportation Committee is to identify and advocate for enhancements to all forms of transportation guided by concerns for safety, equity, accessibility, and the environment.
Move that.
So.
Second. All in favor? Okay, and then, Jim, I think on the issue of Kirschbaum, just let that evolve.
All right, okay.
So look, uh, the one other thing, uh, we've got a number of other things to talk about. Um, uh, Bruce, do you wanna do a quick report on Marais School, uh, uh, um, ECC Athletic, uh, Field?
That is, sorry.
Is, uh, is, is Jenny here? No, I don't see her. Um, okay, uh, just any, any update there?
Well, the, the one update, um, there are various things in gestation. The one update from the Task Force meeting last week is that, um, and I put this in my weekly newsletter for, uh, my constituents, and that is that, uh, Task Force members expressed um, their ongoing concerns about notification of construction activities that are clear and provided to community members in advance. Um, they touched on, and this was the Task Force as a whole, um, touched on the need for greater community engagement, addressing neighbor concerns in a, in a timely fashion, transparently, and those sorts of things. There remain stormwater runoff issues, heavy rains on Saturday night, flooded properties again on Twenty-Eighth Street. That was something we were working on, uh, during a greater part of today. Uh, the Department of Energy and Environment i- is involved, they're going to be doing sediment control, because when this stuff washes off, it washes sediment down. Um, and the construction activity today rumbled, there were shaking of homes on Twenty-Eighth Street, uh, which is another issue that we had to come to terms with today. So, uh, I'm echoing Task Force uh, positions to Marais, MCN Build, the contractors about greater community outreach, greater transparency, greater advanced notification of construction activity. So that is kind of a short update from the Task Force. There's a very lengthy report that Jenny Backus has produced, and she'll be distributing to the community.
And I have put that up, uh, at the, the Task Force, uh, website, webpage is now up to date with that posted this morning, so.
I commend you for that, thank you, it's very good.
Who knew I could wo- learn anything about WordPress? Okay, uh, there's not, no update on, uh, bio-retention basins, as I said to Jim, um, uh, uh, I believe that, um, D Dot will have, um, their, uh, rethought bio-retention basin proposal uh, to us by the time of our next meeting. And so I will be inviting, for that reason alone, I will be inviting Director Kirschbaum to that meeting, which is June tenth, I believe. Um, I wanna briefly discuss, uh, the, uh, what we should do about our meetings. Um, uh, I, uh, where is the high school student? Whatever happened to that high school student?
There, there, there are two high school students, I think I've indicated everybody. Uh, there are two high school students, well, one college student and one high school student who are available, interested, uh, if we are interested in having them, uh, support a hybrid meeting. Um, I think there are other factors involved in hybrid meetings as opposed to online-only meetings that we're all well aware of, in terms of the manageability, the convenience, and other factors, right?
So I'd just say, my understanding of where we are on this issue is that we had an administrative meeting in April, and we brooded this about, and we sort of said we had to cope with the zoning issue, so we were gonna do, my understanding of what we agreed to was we were gonna do virtual-only meetings through April. It's May thirteenth, so we either have to decide we're gonna keep doing them for a while, or I think we have to go back to, uh, hybrid meetings. So I'm, I'm, I'm happy to entertain a proposal that we stay virtual. The other thing I wanna do though, tonight, i- if we do, whether we entertain a proposal, uh, to stay virtual for a while or not, I really think we've gotta shorten our comments and the comments of residents attending. Um, we are losing people, we are losing commissioners, um, we are losing, uh, working people, we are losing people with young children. Um, you really have to be retired, um, to, 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 to do this, to, to, even to attend one of these meetings. So I, I really think there's a trade-off here, and we need to shorten these times. Um, uh, so, um, uh, let's first, Elizabeth, just wait one second, let me just understand from uh, other commissioners, where, um, where are you on the issue of virtual versus hybrid? I'm happy to try hybrid again, I'm happy to, sometime between now and June tenth, which is I think our next meeting, to meet these two, um, students and go over to the community center and mock, set up a mock, s- you know, mock up the system and see if, uh, if they get it and they know how to perfect it, and we can get some of us online, uh, uh, you know, uh, to see if it works. But I really don't wanna do it again myself. I mean, I messed up enough times, and I've proven my inability to uh, wrestle that technology to the ground. Peter?
Yeah, real quick, I would just say that I think there's enough troubles with hybrid, that I think it might make sense to do uh, partial in-person, partial online, and we could still use the help of making sure that if we were in-person that the in-person meeting was, uh, properly videoed and audio uh, was done properly, and it was uploaded, and we could always use administrative help from, uh, these, these folks, so. Um, my, my position would be s- split, uh, between in-person and hu- uh, online. No hybrid.
So in other words, every other meeting, we do it just in person, video it, and stick it up later?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, um, uh, other commissioners? Uh, Michael?
Well, I like all virtual, because I think it, we get greater attendance, and I think it's much easier, but if, Bruce, you spoke to this, um, Luis Chica, and who um, may be able to give it a try, I'm happy to give it a try, um, and, and, and see if we can make it work. But I'm happy to give it a try one time, otherwise, I'd like to stick with all virtual, because I think more people can participate in it that way. It, there's a trade-off, you don't get to see people in person, but I favor greater community participation in gross numbers than I do a smaller number in-person people.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, there's definitely trade-offs every direction. I mean, we've had four and a half hour meetings virtually, we cannot, we can never have a four and a half hour meeting at, in the evening at the community center. So in-person hybrid meetings, you know, trade-off community engagement, we can't have four and a half hour meetings. Now, a lot of people don't look at four or five hour meetings as a good thing, and that's very exhausting, and so e- everyone has different opinions and preferences. Um, but one thing where I wasn't sure we left things was, I, you know, I welcome any help, we have a lot of money in the budget for support. Um, but high school students, you know, sometimes they graduate May, sometimes they're here in the summer, sometimes they're not, our next meeting's in June. Um, and they also sometimes go to college away from, you know, here in September, so if we do have a student, I just, I, I wasn't sure if we had heard that they're available for the rest of the calendar year or not, um, but I, I welcome any help.
So we have two, and one is definitely available, because we've talked about this, the other, I believe, indicated he would also be available, but we can confirm that, but we have two candidates.
One is Bruce, one is the high, uh, high school student, and one is the George Mason College student, is that right?
Your guy is the George Mason, yes, yes. Luis is your guy.
He's not my guy, I just.
Well, I mean, the person you sent to me, the one you referred.
He's not my guy, and that.
No, it's okay, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just putting, putting it out that way, so do.
Goslin, Goslin is my guy, I'm just looking for, you know.
Goslin's all of our guy, he's, he's the guy.
Unfortunately, um, uh, yeah, okay, a very quick comment, Liz, and then, uh, I think we'll just, uh, we'll, we'll try to come up with some solution, at least for the next meeting, um, uh, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Um, I guess I just wanted to say that I, you talk about limiting the time that, that people can comment, but there's been very little comment from people not on the commission or not presenting to the A and C tonight, so it's hard to imagine how we could actually have less input than we had tonight. And, and I understand that commissioners are tired and they wanna go home, and I get all that, but um, but it is important to get community input, and this is not working for community input, having an entirely online meeting. I really think we need to try to figure out how to do hybrids. Other entities do it in DC. Um, and I think we can, we can manage to do that. We have a lot of talent out there, and we can manage to make that happen.
Peter, can I just say one? The vote of confidence, uh, in, no, so, I mean, here's a suggestion that, um, uh, uh, Liz, on this meeting, um, my intention is to keep, to keep it to two hours, uh, I'm failing at this point, but it, um, uh, i- in general, we've had a lot of, of, uh, community input at meetings. I do agree with you that, um, the up-close and personal of an in-person meeting, um, it is important, and my suggestion is that we try, I, I meet with the, uh, students, uh, between now and June tenth. We see how, uh, it goes, uh, once I s- tell them how to set it up, let them set it up, mock it up, and then we try June ten. If, I mean, if it turns out that they get it, and God only knows, they're probably more adept at this stuff, And then we try June ten. If, I mean, if it turns out that they get it, and God only knows, uh, they're probably more adept at this stuff. Uh, presented de novo than I have, I am six months or eight months in. Um, if they get it, then we do June tenth as a hybrid and see how it goes. Uh, if that doesn't work, then I, I think Peter's suggestion is not a bad one. Um, because, um. It, 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 it basically exposes us to people and it, we, we, but we admit our limitations, uh, 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 my, our tech limitations, so. Um, does that seem like a reasonable way to go?
The, the only, the only thing about, um, I'm, I'm up for anything. You, we will still have to have an audio visual component to record it. Um, the other thing is, is that as the secretary who does these minutes and, and so forth, it is infinitely easier to do this if you have a Zoom recording. You have a Zoom transcript, and you have those materials to work with to produce the minutes.
Well, we might be able to get Zoom to do the recording. Our, our big problem is essentially getting it out of the building and to people. So, I mean, um, we could use this technology to, to make the recording.
Well, except that you have to have people mic'd if they're speaking, you know, those things are, you know, there, there, there are factors there, right? Um, but, you know, I'm, I'm up for anything, just voicing that it's, um. Yeah, just that.
Jim?
Yeah, I, I also, uh, like Peter Lynch's idea of, of, of alternating if we can make it work. I also, I understand what. Bruce was saying as a former secretary, you, you've got to have some kind of a recording, uh, however you do it, but. Alternating, uh, back and forth, uh, has, has, uh, some, some good advantages to it if we cannot make the hybrid work. And the hybrid has been, uh, I have also heard, and with myself can attest. Hybrids can be harder for people who are older and are harder of hearing, because the acoustics are so horrible in that room. And with hybrid, it makes it very difficult for it to work. And I, I've had constituents just say they're not, they're not gonna come to hybrids anymore. Uh, because of that. And then I, I want to sort of agree, but also. Qualify what I heard Liz say, because I think there's something of a trade-off in that. If you have, if you want a community engagement. Uh, if you don't manage it right, it can end up actually hurting community engagement. Because I have heard people say, oh, your meetings are so long, people say the same thing over and over again, and people get turned off. So, um, it's, uh, there's, there can be a trade-off, uh, about length of speaking and, and the same people speaking. That's it.
Jim, just with regard to the acoustics. Uh, it, it is true that the, the hybrid, uh, equipment, uh, causes a, an additional layer of problems. But that room, as a hearing aid, uh, wearer, that room is awful in and of itself. I mean, it's, it's, it's just awful, right? It's just concrete. Cheryl, very quickly?
I'm kind of surprised that you're having this discussion online during the meeting. It seems like a good discussion to have by email offline. But, um, what I would, would suggest is that each commissioner have individual meetings with their constituents. So that you're better prepared to represent your constituents when you come to these meetings. Um, of course, SMD zero one will be completely left out in the dark. Because obviously, that commissioner is, um, missing in action in general. But maybe we could be invited to somebody else's meeting. Uh, just a suggestion, so that we're not being referred to as, um. You know, having, having voiced our, uh, opinions when we haven't had the opportunity to do so. At least when we're in person, we, um, force ourselves upon you, as it were. And you get to hear our opinions, whether you like it or not. But, you know, for example, Bruce Sherman has meetings with his constituents regularly. And, um, you know, then he's able to come to these meetings and represent what his constituents have to say. And it doesn't appear to me that anybody else is doing that. That's just my suggestion. Thanks.
We're all croppers here. Um, okay, so, uh, uh. You want to try, you want to try this, uh, give, give hybrid one more shot, June ten? And you, Bruce, will you connect these people to me? No, I can't hear you.
Yes, I will.
And, and would you loop in the treasurer on payment issues?
Yes. Um, I will absolutely do that. Shall we arrange? And we can do this offline. I'll, I'll have them come, and maybe we do a training. Uh, and Zach, we can figure out how to pay them on that, but definitely I'll loop you in, yes.
So let's just, uh, I, I want to skip over the task force. Uh, uh, we've got a report on Marais. Um. Um, let's just, uh, Secretary, you have a April twenty-fifth, uh, minutes to approve?
I, I do, right. And I sent those out to you this morning. Um, I don't know if you had a chance to take a look at them. Um, if not, then we can approve them at the next meeting.
I did not have a chance to look at them, so I, I would ask that we wait.
Zach, you, you, I have not prepared, uh, reimbursements for the Verizon hotspot. My proposal is to get rid of the Verizon hotspot, just cancel it. I mean, we're, we're not using it. It was sort of the backup for the bad wifi in the, uh, I mean. Um, so, but, but you want to do the quarterly financial, uh, report?
Yeah, I, I can share my screen to show everyone. Um, so this is our quarterly financial, sure. Share screen. It's probably hard to see. We didn't spend a whole lot of money. Um. But you can see, most of our payments are communication-related. Um, it's Zoom, it's MailChimp, um, the groups.io, and also calcimoner for the, um. Forum used by our RACE committee. Um, we spent about seven hundred and fifty dollars. We have about fifty-one thousand, uh, fifty thousand dollars left. Um. So this is what we would submit to, this is, uh, January to March of this year. Um. And so pending any discussion, um, I would vote that we approve. The ANC three, three, four G quarter, quarterly financial transactions for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, quarter two.
Could I just ask a question before we do that? Why do I keep getting, um, notifications essentially every day? That Q four twenty twenty-four financial reports are due. They're not due until November, but what, I mean, I, I, I mean, like, essentially daily, I get something, I assume, from the, the district government. What's, or OANC?
Um. You should forward me that. I'm not sure what that is. Um, but we, they have transitioned to a new software for all the finances of the ANC, so there's a lot of growing pains, but. Yeah, if you just forward it to me, I can maybe help out and see what they're talking about. Um.
Peter?
And this is not, Bruce, this, uh, Peter, Goslin, this is not your, we all have, you know, our annual financial disclosure forms due.
I've done that. No, no.
Okay.
By the way, uh, um, in our first term, um. Then, Chair Speck said we didn't have to file anything. But, um, I went back and forth with OANC and Jega, and. We don't have to file actual financial information, but we have to file a declaration by Wednesday. That says not scamming the government. Blah, blah, blah. So you might want to do that if you haven't done it already. Peter?
Yeah, uh, what is the cost for this, uh, forum, and what purpose does the forum serve?
Sure, um, the forums dot or groups.io is how our, um. RACE community communicates. Um, if you've been on the Chevy Chase listserv, it's the same type of, um, interface and same program. Um, so it's about twenty dollars a month. We got a discount because we paid annually. Um. And I believe the transportation committee is interested in getting one as well, um, using that, because I think it's been quite successful with RACE. So I think the transportation committee is interested in that as well.
So, um. Corinthia, are you still on?
Libby's on.
Are Libby's on?
Yes, I'm still on.
Is, it does, how, how does this, uh, this, this is really helpful, the, the forum?
Yes. I mean, that's how you communicate with us. When you send emails, it goes through the group. Um, iOS, as Zach mentioned, is similar to the Chevy Chase listserv group.
Got it. Okay, and then the, the yearly cost for that, Zach, is?
Two hundred and twenty dollars.
Um, Cal, I'm gonna defer to Cal. Go ahead, Cal. You have your hand up.
Hey, so, um, it's not just the listserv. I mean, it's how we communicate with these other. We also have subgroups for this, for the, uh, subcommittees, which the transportation committee is gonna use very heavily. We also have a place to store documents, photos, a wiki. There's a whole bunch of features that the Chevy Chase community listserv doesn't use. They just use it as an email server. So, um, the transportation committee in particular, I think, is gonna avail themselves of all these extra features.
Jim?
Uh, yeah, it, I, uh, I'm, this is a little bit off point, but are. I wanted to ask, are we gonna get the race committee report?
The race committee? We, we got, we got it. We got it from.
Yeah, I sent it to Peter, Libby sent it to Peter April tenth. And I resent it again to yesterday. So I, um. I, I think that was sent to everybody April tenth.
Okay.
And, and Libby and Corinthia, uh, spoke on it at the, early in the meeting.
Okay. Sorry, I missed that. Okay.
So, look, do, do we, uh, Zach, you want to make a motion? Are we, um?
I made a motion.
Oh, okay, and I second it. Uh, all in favor of approving the second quarter of, uh, quarterly report?
Six zero. Michael, you held your hand up, right? Alright, good.
Yeah, uh, I think, uh, we can adjourn.
I do too.
Um, we're twenty-five minutes over the nine o'clock goal, but that's all right. Um, uh. Okay, uh, and Bruce, you'll get me the names of these people and the contacts for them, so.
I'll, I'll, I'll connect everybody up on email.
That is, okay, good night.
Bye, bye. Thank you. Bye.
And I have to turn off the, I have to turn off the record, right?
Yeah, well, if you just leave the meeting, it turns itself off.
Alright. Bye.